Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting of May 1st. Happy May 2018. First item is a salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have an approval of the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor. Minutes of the last meeting, looking at April 10, April 17, and April 24.
Make a motion, we approve April 10, 17, and 24.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor. Department head, committee chair, updates. Anyone out there? No? Okay. Old business, Atlantic broadband agreement.
You might want to give a recap, plus it's not signed yet, so it's under old business, based on the call and some directions from the attorney.
Okay, we had Burke and Clegg look at the agreement that Atlantic Broadband drafted up and compared it to MetroCast, and Brad was able to find quite a few differences that we thought, as a board, you know, made a difference as far as the customer as well. So some of the things he looked at was they, Atlantic Broadband, wanted to go from extending services from 10 homes per mile to 25 homes per mile, which means that you'd have to have more homes in order to stretch the service. So we're actually, would like to see that stay at the 10 homes, not increase the homes for the extended service. What was the, what was the other? Oh yeah, the liability insurance on the motor vehicle was a million per vehicle with MetroCast, and that's what we'd like to keep it at. I'm not positive with it. 250. The other, Atlantic wanted 250, so we're asking to keep that at a million. What was some of the other substantial?
The time that they had, the turnaround time that they had to fix certain things.
Oh yes.
They had almost tripled in size. We can review the entire memo from Brad next week if you want, but he said he was going to send something over.
And any property damage to be, the restoration period, we'd like to keep that period shortened.
Basically, they took a lot of things that were in the old contract and extended the life and time and length to their benefit, so the board, so the attorney pointed them all out, and the board is going to rebut with, you know, we'd like a lot of these things to stay the way they were, so.
Yep.
And we'll start communicating with them and see how they take it.
So if you have any other questions, feel free to ask one of the, one of us or Jennifer. Mass gathering permit.
So this is a follow-up from last week. You asked for additional information on the custom, this is the July 28th at the fairgrounds. Do you remember Deputy Shaw came down and spoke to you about them?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Custom Deadbeat?
Yeah, Deadbeat Customs.
Deadbeat Customs, thank you. We wanted some information on their background. We went through their website, we went through their Facebook page, we couldn't find any calls to the Sheriff's Department. It seems like it's a gone.
Everything looked good. I just wasn't familiar with, I, yeah, I just wasn't familiar with the kind of activity having that many people camping in one spot. I think we may recommend that they, we can't make them, but we'd like to recommend they have a deputy on duty that night for any sort of traffic.
And the Sheriff's Department, they always got copies of your mass gathering permit as well, so they'll be on alert as well.
What kind of gathering is it? What are they? I wasn't here for this.
Oh, so they hold an activity at Iron Tales. I think it's the burnout thing, right?
It's a motorcycle rally with all the types of different competitions and so forth.
And then they're going to have camping across the street at the fairgrounds.
They've ranked at the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, so everybody stays there.
And there won't be any, any open fires or, I mean, it sounds pretty good.
At the fairgrounds, they have to follow all of their regulations and their lease.
Yeah, and they've never had issues in previous locations that they could find, so it'll be fine. Do we have a motion to accept the permit?
I'll make a motion that we accept the permit for the mass gathering permit for, what's the name of the outfit here again?
Deadbeat Customs.
Yeah, Deadbeat Customs, that works.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor. Okay, marijuana public hearing.
This is just a follow-up from last week. You had some questions, I wanted to try to get answered for the, Mr. Nass that stood up. Number one, will you allow non-residents to attend the public hearing was the actual question. I think he meant to speak.
Right.
Anyone can attend.
Anyone, so non-residents can speak as long as they are a land, a property owner.
Okay, so anyone can attend. Richard, we're just starting your list. Anyone can attend the public hearing. Only property owners or residents will be allowed to speak.
Yes.
You're going to set time limits on the speaking?
Three minutes with no rebuttal and comebacks.
Three minutes, nobody gets up twice?
Right.
Sure?
Yes.
Okay, you guys heard it here first.
I'm going to need a hammer.
I'll get you one. What role do you want the marijuana committee to take at the public hearing? Do you want them to make a statement, answer questions, what, just?
As long as it stays pertaining to the actual question on the ballot.
So do you want them to open it by giving a, some sort of?
A history of their role.
History of the role, which should still only be a couple of minutes. We just want to make sure that all of the questions and everything that's discussed is only on that one page of that ordinance that's voted on.
Right.
We're not talking about, you know, marijuana, medical. We're not talking about what you're growing in the backyard.
No, talking about odor.
Just the one page.
Just, yeah.
Okay, so answering, I'm Richard Nass for the marijuana committee. Relative to answering questions, that implies that we may be up here more than once, so I mean, so we're clear.
I mean, I think the answer, the questions are going to be answered within the ordinance. I mean, it's pretty clear, the one page, as far as what it allows and doesn't allow.
I don't know, if anybody's asking questions, they want to answer.
If anybody's asking questions about, for instance?
What does it mean? For instance, how many plants can I grow, even though this is not related?
It doesn't pertain to the ordinance.
Okay. So it's not, they can go on the state website.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't know if there'll be questions. Do you want us to, I mean, we're willing to answer questions if you want us to. That implies that we're going to potentially be up here more than once.
Right, but I feel like if there's going to be all kinds of those sorts of questions, maybe we could hold a different type of gathering after the public hearing to answer those questions, because I'm sure they'll come up, but
Okay.
the public hearing is just for
Okay.
the question on the ordinance question.
Ballot.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. It'll be tough, but we'll, we'll get through it. Okay. New business, cemetery check request.
So the, your debit card authorization allows me to expend over, up to $500, assuming the department has it within their budget. Cemetery reached out to us with some flags they needed, originally gave me the estimate of 500, so I started ordering them. Turns out it's going to close to 650. They still have the money, but I need your authorization for the additional 150 on the card.
We don't need to vote on it.
Just sign, right?
Yeah.
So the treasurer met with FEMA earlier this week and is going over a lot of things regarding roads and other emergency management things. They are looking for a purchasing policy. They're surprised that the town didn't have one, so she's drafted one, just something that, hoping that you'll take with you tonight, and we can put on the agenda for next week. Maybe if you have any questions, you can email them to me in advance, and we'll see if Michelle can answer them. It's a pretty standard, talks about competitive pricing, bidding, when you have to go out. Basically, everything that you kind of already have in place, it's just put together in a policy.
Okay.
So we're hoping to get that signed within the next week or two. Certainly let me know if you have any changes or additions.
1819 mowing contract.
So the way that we have worked in the past, at least 10 years, is that $5,000 is generally the amount that we have to go out to bid for. We've had the same mowing contractor for many years. It's just been one year in the past, I think, six or seven that we gave it to someone else. Even in the prior year, I think two years ago, he wasn't low bidder, because he was an act and resident. The board still felt like they wanted to keep the money locally if they could. I think that everybody's happy with the services. It is under the 5,000, and it is time to renew. So the question is, do you want, I spoke to him, he's willing to flatline it at the same price. The only thing that came up, Ed, was that there was some discussion as whether or not the rec fields would be included.
Yeah, I just didn't know who did the rec field.
Brian White does those.
Someone else does it?
Yep, someone else does those, the final, no, it's not the final, but Brian White does them. He has for at least eight or nine years through the rec, and his price hasn't gone up either.
Leave that the way that is. Let's mess them with a good thing.
So are you interested in going out to bid, see if we can be more competitive? Are you interested in just leaving it the way it is, and me negotiating a contract for the same flat amount with the current individual?
We're not changing the area that he mows, or any of the services.
Nothing changes, the amount, the locations.
He was, how much last year, 40?
I looked quickly. He gets 720, his payment's a 720, and it was either, I couldn't figure it was five or six, but he, again, I confirmed with him that the price wasn't changing, assuming that we didn't add any new locations to it. I mean, does the fall clean up?
I'm happy with using the same person we use.
Does anybody have any concerns?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have no.
He's always been very, okay, so we're going to, I need an actual motion to waive the bidding process, since it's less.
I'll make a motion, we waive the bidding process and continue with, what's the name of this company?
Ham's property?
It was his Ham's property.
For the same amount as the prior year.
Same amount for another year.
All right, I'll second that.
All in favor.
So we'll draft up a contract for you to sign next week.
Okay, special town meeting.
Okay, so a few things, I'm going to try to tie the next two together. So we know that we have to have a special town meeting because we went over winter maintenance more than the 15% that were allowed by law. You saw the emails about the rec, so I wanted to kind of tie that in together. It is true that the rec department has had some conversations about putting in a flagpole and about putting some ditching and electricity down there. The flag company I spoke to today is at least a month, month and a half out. He's got some family emergencies, and the electrician, we're still waiting on a quote for. Remember, Mr. Winchell was going to donate his, his time, so, so one of two things had to happen. We didn't appro, we didn't vote to expend from their capital improvement account. He does have a capital improvement account, and the money is there, but the voters still have to approve the expenditure. So it was either we were going to put an article on the special town meeting, asking to expend it if he was certain he was going to spend it by June 30th this year, because if you add it to the special, it's got to be spent. Or do we add it to the annual town meeting warrant for 1819 and tell them that the work has to start July 1? So after talking to all parties involved, July 1 is the safest bet. I don't know that we can coordinate and get everything done in time anyways for June 30th, so with your permission, we're going to have to call the warrant of finance back together anyways to make a recommendation on this special town warrant, and at the same time, we will let them know that we have added Article 77 that's going to say, to see if the town will vote to appropriate X amount of dollars from the recreation capital improvement funds for the operation to expend out of that account. So they'll have just the two questions. The only other item that we had was a date for the special town meeting. Michelle and I went back and forth with everything. May is a busy month. With your approval, Wednesday, May 23rd at 6 o'clock?
Wednesday, May 23rd? Six? It's fine.
Yeah, that's fine. I was going to say, don't we usually have it at 7:00, but 6:00 is fine, right?
Oh, we can, no, we can do 7:00.
Well, what is?
I mean, it's, it's, it's an overdraft, it's an overdraft, 15% overdraft. I mean, we could do, we could definitely do 7:00. There's nothing on there. I mean, the, it's up to you. You want to do 7:00, just to make sure they're, keep them consistent?
Yeah. Is that okay?
Yeah, I don't want to confuse people.
So 7:00 on the 23rd, Wednesday.
Wednesday, 23rd.
And it'll be just the one article to ratify the overdraft of winter maintenance. And someone did already ask me, what happens if we vote this down, so I'll have that answer at the next meeting. So you're okay with that, and you're okay with the extra article on the 1819 warrant? So Dr. Williams, if you would be so kind to get your committee together.
Will there be a specification, this is for extending electricity to the area and renting a flagpole, will that be the?
Will the wording actually be in there?
Yes.
It's not generally, but it, that will be, the rec department will be there to speak as well. I don't think they have any other projects, but there was talk about one of the sheds that had, that needed some repair work, so I've asked them to get their list together and present it to you all at once.
Okay, thank you.
And remember, if the money's not expended, it goes back into their same account, so.
Right.
Oh, so on, I'm sorry, the 1819 annual town meeting, did you want to make some recommendations tonight?
Oh, yes, definitely.
So Article 9, 10, 11, 12 are all zoning, and you have met with
Ken.
code enforcement, and you've been, yep, so 9 through 12. You want to vote on those together?
Yes.
So we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Articles 9 through 12.
As written?
As written.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor.
And then, so Article 13 is the Acton Fire Rescue Ordinance. Remember that changes here were instigated by the chief with a couple of minor ones that, that you guys added, the 7.16, you added the, you know, the need for the new fire chief as deemed necessary for the Board of Selectmen, and then on 7-2, with approval from the Board of Selectmen on the appointments. Other than that, it's your, your ordinance.
Yep, and it was addressing the appointment of officers that we no longer needed to do with the special commission. Do we have a motion to accept Article 13 as written?
Make a motion, we accept Article 13 as written, approve it.
I'll second that.
All in favor.
And then the next ones, are there any changes? 15 is dispose of surplus. 16 is the quitclaim deed for anybody other than a selectman or an employee for foreclosures. 17 puts all of the, these are all housekeeping, nothing's changed. It puts all of the funds from a tax sale in the capital improvement account. 18 is waiving foreclosure if the board deems it's necessary. 19 is your two tax dates, always the Tuesday in October and April. 20 is the maximum rate for the abatements, or interest, I'm sorry, interest, it's 8%. So that one, you actually, actually, if we can stop there, let's do, let's do 14 through 19, yeah, because 20 needs a number on it.
Do we have a motion to accept Article 14 through 19 as written?
Make a motion, we approve 14 through 19 as written.
I'll second that.
All in favor.
All right, so 20, to see what interest the town will vote to charge on all taxes after April 16th and after, after October 16th and April 16th. Maximum is 8%.
Typically do the max.
Yes.
Correct. I will make a motion that we do the 8%.
8%.
8%.
I'll second that.
All in favor.
All right, and 21, you're required by law to pay interest on abated taxes. The rate, current rate is 4%. And then 22 allows the tax collector to accept prepayments. 23 regard, is regarding the grants, allowing the town to approve them or accept them with the approval of the treasurer. 24 is your snowmobile club, and 25 is the disaster EMA fund. So those are all housekeeping, so possibly we could stop there and give you a chance to review the rest at your next meeting.
Make a motion that we, on Article 21, we set that at 4%, and we approve Article 21 through 25.
As written.
As written.
I'll second that.
All in favor.
So would it be fair for you guys to look over, I mean, for the most part, you, I mean, you guys wrote this, this warrant, so I guess look over them for next week and see if there's any that stand out to you, or any that you don't feel like you would approve as written? And then we can, you can make notes of those, and we can discuss those individually and take individual votes. Does that sound reasonable? The warrant and finance recommendations are all in there as well, so.
Okay.
Okay? Except for 77.
Is 20 a change?
I don't have that copy.
She just gave.
Oh, she just gave you?
Yeah, she just gave this one to me, if you want to look at it.
Yeah, I'll wait to get the copy.
8%?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Last year, I'm sorry, last year, I think it was 7%.
Sure is a change.
Yes, but they voted, they, he made the motion from 8. He was asking if Article 20 was a change. Last year, I think the maximum interest was 7. For this year, it's 8. Is that good? So you'll review the rest of them?
Okay, now, Maplestone donation.
So Maplestone was in today, and I have to show you on my phone, because it's all, the only way I have it. So they've made these really nice picnic tables, the kids have made them. They're, they're really nice, look at the footing and stuff. So they'd like to donate one for Goat Hill, and all they get in, all they get is the community service hours. If you swipe it one more to the right, you can see the kind of, the feet that they put on it. They'd like to donate one. If you accept the donation, then we'll essentially sign off on the community hours that the kids put in.
Nice.
Sounds great.
Want the picnic table up there, accept the donation, and we'll help them coordinate?
Definitely.
And we'll sign off on the hours.
And while we're talking about Goat Hill, can you put this on next week's agenda?
Oh, yes. Remind, the issue you got about the culverts on H Road, I called the property owner, conference in the road commissioner.
Also, okay, that's good.
That made me think of it.
Okay. I haven't checked my emails today. Downstairs office.
So Ken would like to turn the rec room into an office for himself and be able to shift his deputy into his office and the land use secretary into the open place. As you know, we, from the conversation, brief conversation we had with him, I'm just kind of looking for your direction. I did ask him if we could sit down the next couple of days and try to tie down the expenses a little bit more. He's able to come up with, you know, the door, the paint, the construction piece of it. We'll have to figure out, electronic-wise, what it'll cost to get the phone and the computers and everything down there. And then we need to talk to the rec department about where they can store some stuff. But is it something that you support if, comes out of the appropriate lines and?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, I've been down a few times, and they're spread out into the next room with.
It was okay with two people, but now you've got three down there, and it's a pretty small little area.
Okay, I'll work on it for next week.
Can we try to involve Peter? If, if the equipment's going to go to the building next door?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, absolutely, yep. All I was thinking, because they don't have that much stuff. I mean, if you, one of those large utility closets, has keys to it, should be able to stack their stuff and put it in there.
Okay.
And it would be in the exercise room somewhere, but certainly, yep, I'll contact Peter.
Okay, now we are open for public comment.
Thank you for, excuse me, thank you for doing that 650 for us, because we, this is the time, we need the cash. The only thing I was going to ask, Jen, I guess we're waiting on two more reams of flags after this is done, and you're going to be able to?
The, yeah, the, I couldn't expend more than the $500.
Even though it's in our account, I know that.
Right, I couldn't expend, I can't use the debit card for more than $500 until the board signs off. So I am at a training class all day tomorrow, Personnel Matters. I will order them on Friday, Thursday.
Okay, because that's what, because that's what we're waiting on. In fact, that's the way Steve met me, because we were down to 10 flags.
Right, but I mean, there's nothing I can do, that's town policy.
Yeah, and the other thing I was going to say, thank you, Jen, for doing our minutes at Warrant and Finance, and I know there's a, there's a clerk fee there. I was going to ask the board if it's possible that Jennifer could get those for the two days that she spent.
No, Jennifer's on salary, and that's not part of the agreement.
Well, that's part of the thing, as far, we do have fees.
That's not the agreement when the board hired me, though, that's, you know what I mean? I, when I had Warrant and Finance meetings on those Wednesdays that I knew I had to come back on, I would leave at noon time, go run some errands, come back. I've worked out my hours, and not to trump them, because they are the boss, but I've worked out my hours, and, I mean, I'm expected to be there, that's, it's a salary position. I don't want to get paid for it.
I just feel it was above and beyond what you were expected to do, and I wanted to make sure that you were compensated for it, because we do have that little bit of compensation for it.
Thank you for caring.
Well, that's part of it, because that's, that's not an easy job, because I know I had it last year.
And if she wasn't available, we would have to find somebody to do that, and pull it from that line, but she was available.
That's a joyous salary, so, so good.
That was not, I did it last year, it was not a lot of fun. The other, the other thing I have, as going out, putting out flags, I noticed that we have a company in town that has two veterans in their area, and I was wanting, it's not cleaned up, and it's not professionally looking for a company that owns them, and I was, didn't know, and I don't really want to say the companies, and I'll talk to you afterwards if you'd like me to.
Yeah.
But I'd like to know how that actually works as far as making sure they're cleaned and taken care of, if that's my question.
There's two graves on a business property?
On a company's.
Is it a property, is it a property owner, or, I mean, it's public information, you might as well just say it.
It's on Three Rivers Land Trust.
Okay.
It's a, it's a two-veteran grave, it's out there on Hobbs and Spiel. And I went out to put the two flags out, and it was pretty sad, you know, considering they own.
I think it's a letter.
Well, well, let's reach out to them. I mean, this is, this goes back, I mean, and just while you're up here, to follow up, we, I did reach out to Mr. Davis and Mr. Cashin in regards to her concerns last year, last week with Hebo-Hibo. We're in the process of trying to put something together that will work for everybody, so they're, the same people are tied to the Three Rivers, so I think it's something we can address all at once.
Okay.
Like I said, that's something that I happened to notice, because when I went out and did flags, I wasn't going to say much of anything. I just found it discouraging, because it's something that.
I'm sure it's not intentional from Three Rivers.
No, no. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any?
Joe DiOrio from Lakeside Drive. I wasn't here for the meeting last month about the Buzzal Road, snow plowing, but I just wanted to clarify a few things for the record that, that I thought were quite accurate. First of all, stated that there were two residents on that, on that section of Buzzal Road, there were actually three.
I think I said three driveways.
Pardon me? I, I'm sorry, I, I looked at, I, I watched a video, I thought it said two.
Oh, I know what I said. There were two residences that accessed their homes from the paved portion of Buzzal, according to, I don't know.
I know this is.
And then there were three, yeah, on the dirt.
Right down, right down to the bottom of the hill. And the other thing was stated that it's been years since they actually stopped plowing that. Yes, they are correct about years as far as doing all of Buzzal and all of Lakeside Drive, but it's only been this year, to the best of my knowledge, that they stopped plowing down to that first residence.
At the end of the pavement.
Pretty much, yeah. Just like I said, like I've stated before, it's only another tenth of a mile, so. Just like I said, like I've stated before, it's only another tenth of a mile, so.
Okay.
Whether it makes any changes or not, any decision or not, I don't know, but I just wanted it mostly for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you wanna say something?
I was just gonna say, with the three driveways, is that three people that are living on it right now? And, okay, not just part-time, but full-time? Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Did you wanna read the announcements?
Go ahead. What you got there? I'll start with the, okay, what do we got here? We have a spaghetti supper fundraiser, May 11th, at the Town Hall, from 5:30 to 7:00. It's a $5 donation and it's for the Odyssey of the Mine team to get to their world championships. So, we should all come out to that.
And they did, just real quick, they, they decided to drive and not fly, so that's knocked a few thousand dollars off their expenses. And they are, I think, and don't quote me, $2,000, $2,500 away from their goal, so they are very close and very appreciative.
Read these, they're both the same. Town of Acton, we're gonna have a public notice. The Board of Selectmen have scheduled a public hearing on Tuesday, May 15th at 7:00 PM to discuss the question. Shall an ordinance entitled "Ordinance Prohibiting Retail Marijuana Establishments and Retail